Okay, welcome to a another crazy night today for special meeting on a closed session item, which is for a legal counsel that is being brought to my attention as of right now because that's not what it was scheduled for yesterday. The legal counsel that supposedly was appointed or approved in-
Mayor, you don't have anything for a legal counsel on your agenda. What you have-
Go ahead, can you please get your mic because we do not-
What you have is one item pending, or potential litigation. That's it. That's all that's on this agenda.
And I'm sorry, sir, but you are not on the agenda for what you're supposedly were told to be here for. And I, and as I said, you don't have a contract. I asked for a con- a contract that they approved. I asked for a specific assignment. Kathy? That there was a specific assignment for you to be here as a special counsel, that was never done. I asked Serta for a resolution and if he understood that he was required to bring a resolution with the special assignment, that was never done. I asked him to bring it back to counsel so that we can approve your assignment. That was never done. Your contract, I asked Bertha Augustine for a copy of your contract. There is no contract signed. So until you have a co- a contract that's signed, it is not the same as our current city attorney. He is our actual existing city attorney. You're someone that is being approved to be a special counsel for this council here, but you, we don't have a signed document. That's why I asked you if you had a copy of your signed contract. Because if you see the agreement that was put on the agenda for your contract, it had no names on there. Like who's supposed to sign? Who was authorized from the city to sign the agreement? None of that was done. It's all blank. Could you go ahead and approach?
My understanding is that the contract-
Is it on? I'm sorry.
My understanding is that the contract between the city and my office, which is Leaver at Cassidy Whitmore, was passed by a majority of the council.
On the 13th, correct?
I'm not sure which day it was passed by the council in open session. But that is my understanding, that it was passed by a majority of the council in open session. I suspect to the extent you're saying that it wasn't signed, that-
There is no contract that's signed. I've asked for it.
Okay. So I'm not going to comment on the validity of the contract. I mean, I think you're entitled to get, I guess, advice on that or representation. I don't think it would be ethical for me to give you an opinion on our own contract because I think it would be a conflict. But again, my understanding is that the contract was approved by a majority of this council in open session. That my understanding is I am here for a closed session item that has been agendized and that we would give the specific facts as required under the Brown Act in order to go into that closed session. And that that is the item on for today.
It's not. No, it's not. Can you explain, Neil? Because potential litigation, you're, can you please? I don't even think we're gonna get, okay, go ahead.
Do it.
Okay. Mayor Beltran?
Present.
Mayor Potem Rodriguez?
Present.
Councilmember Melina?
Present.
Councilmember Garza?
Present.
Councilmember Solorio?
Present.
The city clerk and the treasurer absent.
Okay, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, again, I'm, my apologies to you, sir. I don't know who you are. The 13th, June 13th. On June 10th, they announced a vote three to zero, because two were absent, for the termination, and that's an assumption because it wasn't even saying a termination of Costanzo, okay? Because it was not announced. But on, but on, can I stop? Can you stop? So on June 13th, they announced the termination of Costanzo and your contract for the city of Parlier. So what I asked at that time was for them to provide a specific assignment for your special counsel. Okay? And I specifically asked Mr. Serta if he understood that he was supposed to bring it back to the council for approval of the assignment of your task in a resolution. I asked him if he understood that. He said he did. We have not as of yet seen any resolution. It's never been brought back to council for approval of your assignment. This potential litigation was, and the potential litigation that Mr. Costanzo- Can you please stop?
Not it.
Was on our-
The item today is a potential litigation that Jamie set up.
It was an item, it was an item that was on yesterday.
No, it wasn't. Not, it's not-
It was our item that was tabled for yesterday.
No, it wasn't. You can, you can lie if you want.
So then, that is why I asked Neil yesterday to please verify the potential litigation agenda item that was on yesterday. And I asked him if that was-
We discussed specifically.
Yes, we did.
That the, the one that was on there was continued to hear.
It was on live stream, and I'm sorry.
Sabrina, wow, thank you, please, Sabrina.
This, this one was posted before you guys made that decision.
It's, but it was a, okay, is he our attorney?
No, I'm just saying about-
Is he our attorney?
But during, you're saying that this-
Because we previously had, you had asked me that if this item could go for the next day because you didn't want to stay here. She didn't say the next meeting to me. If not, then she should have made that clear.
But I did.
That was brought to us the, the day of the meeting, yesterday. Okay, it was just put on us yesterday at five o'clock. So we were not ever informed of what is going on here. It's just surprise. Here you go, this is what we're doing, and it's, it says potential litigation. You're not our city attorney to litigate any of our cases, first of all. Okay, we have a current city attorney-
That has been fired.
That has not been fired because this man here does not have a contract, but yet you want him to work without a contract? Who signed it?
Didn't you say that Mr. Costanzo did not have a contract?
You're trying-
You said he, they lost his contract.
We stole it.
You said Mr. Costanzo lost his contract.
He is our current-
We destroyed his documents.
Attorney. So because he's our current attorney, it's not like you that you have not been hired with the city. I put the example, like if you, Serta, you were a lieutenant. If we lose your contract, does that mean you go back to lieutenant? Because I asked for your contract too. I still have not received that.
Okay, we're not talking about, about, we're not talking about the chief right now, people, live stream. Let me explain to you.
We, we did this legislature- Contract?
First, and yesterday, on the 25th, and yesterday, in their meeting, they switched to for today. So we're supposed to have two limitations.
So I don't know who authorized and who was authorized to sign. Because in order for us to approve anyone to sign, it has to be on the agenda, giving the authorization to the mayor to sign the agreement. You know that.
Okay, she's done.
It did not have that.
We're suppo- this was on the 25th.
With that being said-
Alma, excuse me. Let me explain to the people live stream the truth.
We don't have a contract with you, sir.
Okay, we don't have a contract, but listen to this. We had this on the 25th. She keeps interrupting because she doesn't want you guys to hear the truth on live stream.
Listen. Actually says any of the specifics of your assignment.
On the 25th.
What is the specifics of your assignment, sir?
You guys on live stream, exactly what I said on my message today. She doesn't want you guys to hear the truth.
Were, were you told to do a special assignment? Well, yes, go ahead. I want to know because we have no, no knowledge of what you're doing here.
She knows.
Because he's not approved. He's not approved. Where's your contract?
My understanding is that-
Can you speak in the mic, please?
My understanding is that our agreement, so the agreement between the city of Parlier and my law firm, Leaver at Cassidy Whitmore, was approved by a majority of the council at an open meeting. That I am here in invitation of the council to speak on a closed session item, which is one potential litigation case under D1. The facts of that case are-
Who are you representing? The city?
Oh my God.
No, because he does not represent counsel. Are you representing the city?
My office would, it represents the city.
But you're, you're not representing the council, correct? Or are you representing the council? Because that's what Janie Melina said. You're representing that.
He said he got invited by the majority.
Public entities are basically run by a majority of the city council. So my client is the city.
The city, correct. Not council members, correct?
Not individual council members, no.
Exactly.
And so, as I mentioned, my contract was approved by a majority of the city council.
Where is your contract?
I do not have a copy of the contract with the-
Who was authorized to sign your contract?
She does know.
It's validity to what I'm saying, and you know that I'm saying that it's a fact. You need to have a contract with the city of Parlier. You don't just represent the city of Parlier because three council members told you that. You would have to have a contract.
So again, my understanding is that a majority of the council approved our contract. If there is an issue as to the question of the validity of the contract, I would. I would defer to someone else.
What he's incorrect about is that there's been any assignment to him.
The assignment, correct, yes.
What he, what he's incorrect about is that there's any signed agreement because as I understand it correctly, you haven't signed it.
No, I have not.
So you were, you were, on their approval of the contract on the 17th.
Yes.
You were the only person authorized to sign.
And Neil?
That-
She is going to, she is going to refuse to sign it. She's going to refuse to-
You guys haven't presented me with a contract.
How long has she known about it?
That's her business.
Well, of course.
All I'm saying is that you brought the contract here. And if, unless you have-
If we give the mayor a contract, is she gonna sign it? That's why the majority has a voice.
A special assignment. I know. Unless you have a special assignment, correct?
Unless you have a delegation of authority from the mayor to whoever's gonna sign it, there's nobody else that can sign it. That's all I'm saying. Plus, the other thing I'm saying is simply this. If I remember correctly, the contract basically says we'll provide employment-related services, including negotiation of contracts and stuff like that, on request. And we pointed out on the 17th, and you actually had an exchange with the, your acting city manager.
And I, and I stated to him, and he said he understood.
In order for this contract to result in anything going to the special counsel-
Back page, it has no names.
You have, you have to identify what your- You have to identify what you're assigning to him. And the only people who have that authority is the council.
When did I ask? You were there when I asked. Here it is. No one signed. I still don't know what your special assignment is, because you're a special counsel. You're a special... Can you please stop? You are just a thug.
A thug?
Yes, he's a thug.
That was given with the packet. So that it was approved, and we were not here.
Where is the special assignment? I still want to know, because when I asked...
Special counsel? Again, we approved... My recollection is we approved a special counsel months ago. Okay?
No.
My understanding is this is the contract, this is the company we're going with.
In livestream?
And this is who they, as majority, have approved with that contract.
Go back to the livestream where Serta, when I asked about it, he said that counsel went to Bertha for...
He's correct, Mayor.
But that's last year.
Thank you, Neil.
Then on livestream, on livestream...
This agreement was approved by a majority of the council, okay? The only... Well, on the 17th of June.
Yes. Because you had Santos first, remember? The one you met with?
What is she saying?
So the contract is for...
It's true. It's on the record.
The attorney to provide the city with consulting, representational and legal services pertaining to employment relations matters, including negotiations and administrative and court proceedings as requested by city or otherwise required by law. There's nothing required by law.
Okay.
Until you make the request. So what we discussed on the 17th was that without a request, there's nothing that's been assigned to this council. And you didn't have any resolution...
I asked him that.
...when you approved this, delegating to anybody a authority to make a request to provide those services.
And I explained that to you, Sabrina, like the Megan with her resolution. And I asked you, Serta, at that meeting, if you understood that we needed that resolution with the special assignment for your special counsel. Because that is what a special counsel is. And you said you understood. And I asked you, so when you have the resolution with the special assignment, you are to bring it back to council for council to approve. And I asked you if you understood, and you said yes. So you never brought it back. Why didn't you bring it back?
So... There is a contract. There is a contract. It should be signed. If something needs to be amended in the contract, which we should add, which I have mentioned before, we approved months ago to get somebody so that we can, as a council, can consult with.
Like a personal...
Asking questions like, hey, can you clarify? Is this correct?
So paying for two attorneys.
So, yes, and that was said back then as well. But it was approved by majority the last time. And then this was approved by majority...
This time again.
Weeks ago. So he should be allowed to stay here.
Well, and so... This is where we need to find out, because the legality is to me, special counsel. Again, you do not replace our city attorney. Can you please stop interrupting, Diego? I know that you were like this in probably school, because I am the chairperson, whether you like it or not. I run this meeting.
So then we should... We can move forward with our meeting. And whatever we need to fix, then we just go back and we amend it.
I need to ask Neil. So this is why everything is run... There's no resolution. I get it. But they won't understand that.
Nothing that I recall that was approved previously. And in fact, it was aborted.
They did this on the 13th, which was the serial meetings that they were having.
I'm talking about what they did on the 17th.
Well, with the emails that I have that were sent to your office, you were already in communication with the acting city manager. Not you, but whoever that person is, with a communication.
It's not a difficult thing to do. But you do have to go through the hoops.
I asked...
And there's something...
He said he understood. So what we need to do is actually have you come back for the next meeting and with that resolution with your special assignment. What is so hard to follow the process? This is the problem you guys have, is that you don't want to follow the law. You don't want to follow the process. And I'm not saying that you can't come here. I'm saying that you don't have a contract. You don't have a specific assignment, that which I specifically said at that meeting that you needed a special assignment on your resolution. And I told this to the Serta. He said he understood. Why he's not understanding still, I don't know. I mean, Serta, you need to explain why don't you understand when you said you understood? Yeah, okay, then...
I have a question for you.
Then that's because he doesn't understand. And if he doesn't understand, this is why I've said many times that we need an actual city manager that has the experience to be able... Yeah, and you guys refused to headhunt for a city manager.
He put Serta there, but now she wants him out, because he's helping us get things done here.
You control him.
She wants to control the next city manager.
As soon as they don't do what you want, Alma...
I'm asking for a resolution. I'm asking for a resolution.
That's why we might lose that case you were talking about.
The one that you...
That was talked in closed session.
What case? The one that Kathy gave close session information. Yes, I remember. She contacted Serta.
You fired him. You and your other people.
She contacted Garza.
Call for a point order.
Um, I have a question.
Contacted Garza. You did. It's in a court document.
So, my question. This is... We did put yesterday's closed session item, added it to today. I don't know, Ms. Melina, was this something separate?
That is separate from that. I didn't... This is totally separate from the one from yesterday. Totally separate. Because the one from yesterday, all it said was potential litigation, one case, that was put on the yesterday's agenda and prior agenda before then. I think it was already brought, what, three times?
This is the third. It was gonna be moved to the third time.
That is not on my agenda. I did not ask a request for that one.
Well, okay, so...
Was the request ever given to us?
That's the problem here. It's the same thing. They're both potential items to litigate.
Potential litigation. I'm sorry, but he's not our attorney.
It's his conference with legal counsel. So I'm assuming... I'm assuming Ms. Melina put this on there to have... I'm sorry, Mr....
Michael Uro?
Michael. Mr. Uro. To have him here in closed session for this item that she put on the agenda. The other item was something you were gonna bring up, correct? The other item. Okay, so can we go into closed session, have him here in closed session, have her bring up her question, her concern, and you also provide your information to us as well?
I've never heard of that.
Well, because we do have a contract for him to be here.
Well, you don't have a resolution.
But...
It's like when Megan was here. She had that, all that done.
We bring them a resolution afterwards.
No, you don't.
Yeah, well, I just... That's the problem. Okay.
And the other problem is the Brown Act prohibits anyone from being in the closed session that isn't essential to the discussion at hand. So...
So...
My understanding, and this is just from what happened last night, right?
Yes.
She mentioned that this had been issued, and she said, you know, is this the same as this?
And it is, but it was...
You know, I looked at it, and I said it's the same thing, right?
Because it's still litigation.
Are you just continuing this to tomorrow?
Yes, and it should have been a little bit more clear, because we have a diff... Because he's not our attorney.
That's why I asked the question. Are you just continuing this one? I don't have the other agenda in front of me. But are you just continuing this one?
But that's why he asked the question yesterday. If you guys would pay attention.
That was your understanding, but that's not what I did.
I don't see anything...
Misleading is not good.
...that has been assigned to general counsel.
It was a good distraction, what they did.
I think, you know, the one we did, you know, months ago, that had that resolution, that you're talking about. What happened, to my recollection, is simply this. We got back a bunch of letters from a bunch of attorneys saying, "Thanks, but no thanks." And it was dropped. Don't believe...
And they came up in one of the live streams...
The reason Serta says that counsel went to Bertha.
Lieber Cassidy Whitmore.
No.
I'm guessing that, but I don't know.
But when that happened, Neil, it was because we received a letter... The city manager received a letter from that counsel, special counsel, that said they could not work with the city with the resolutions you had made for them, because their hands would be tied behind their back, and it would be illegal. It would be...
You got that from one attorney.
It would be illegal.
I approached her, a copy of several others.
It would be illegal for them to charge us.
Oh, yes, here you go, sir.
What they said.
Absolutely.
And another question was...
And it's absolutely priceless, because you got a very different response from like about 10 other attorneys, didn't you?
Yeah, she did.
I was told...
That's what she said.
We needed a resolution, and we needed an RFP. Then I was told we didn't.
Can I be...
But then I heard the other day when we had the meeting, when the question was asked...
City attorney, yes, you do.
And the mayor...
Okay.
Said that the attorney gives us the resolutions.
In any government, you have to go with an RFQ.
Their scope of work and the resolution.
You need to learn more.
But when I did that special counsel...
Go back to school.
We were using your resolution, because you guys... I was told by Sonia, abide, that the attorney could not give us his. We had to go with the one you gave us.
I'd like to be recognized when possible.
All I was doing was trying to assign something to him, to the special counsel that you wanted assigned.
That's why you need documentation. Go ahead.
So I just want to, again, reiterate, my understanding is that the contract was approved by a majority of the city council, that we are here for anticipated litigation under subdivision D2 of 54956.9, which would be the anticipated litigation matter, which I don't think is the same matter you had on for yesterday.
No. This is why it was asked yesterday, and they said that it was. So it's not. And this is where it's misleading. And then, and this is the thing that I'm saying, is that the only one that can litigate are anything that's representing the city would be our city attorney. If you're going to be special counsel, you would have to have a specific assignment. We don't have that. So just because they think that they terminated our city attorney with three votes doesn't mean that you just take his position because they said.
And if I can clarify, I am not the city attorney. I'm not claiming to be the city attorney.
So how are you representing the city with a law?
You're not gonna get her out of there.
So again, now, I'm not gonna give an opinion on the validity of the scope of the own contract. The city council can look into that. My understanding of the situation is that the contract was approved by a majority of the city council.
Again, yes.
That I am here to go, to talk about the closed session item under D2, which I do not think your other issue that you've tabled is. It doesn't look like it was the same language.
It's not. This is why we...
And so that's my understanding of the item. I, and again, the city, the attorney issue is not mutually exclusive. Most cities will have a city attorney who is the... It may be in that position. In this case, you have a contracted firm for a city attorney. And that other law firms often provide special counsel on certain issues. And so my understanding is that's what this...
We don't have a resolution with what your assignment will be. We've done this with the other...
Here is on certain issues. You need the assignment.
That's why I'm saying. We had a previous attorney that had an assignment that we hired, and there was a resolution with her. And that's what her assignment was. It specified what her assignment was. This is why I'm asking for a resolution. This is why I specifically told our city acting city manager, and he said he understood, but he obviously did not understand.
So our contract does have a scope of services provided under it. I'm not aware of a... Again, this is for the city to look into. I'm not gonna give advice on it, but I don't... I'm not aware of the requirement to have a resolution further as to the scope. But again, I'm just telling you what my understanding of the situation is. And so again, not...
My understanding is that you worked for Salma before, right, for personnel issues?
We're not talking about that.
I'm asking a question.
Don't answer that. That has nothing to do with what we got here.
Your firm actually...
He used to work for Salma, too.
You guys, you represented Salma, correct, for personnel issues, correct?
So...
That's irrelevant.
The question is, does Lieber Cassidy Whitmore... Lieber Cassidy Whitmore represents...
No, but my question is about Salma, because I do know that they were representing for personnel issues. And that's why I wanted to know if you're... Is that what you're working to deal with here, with personnel issues? Or what... This is why we need a... We need to know what the assignment will be.
The assignment... I'm sorry. But the assignment cannot be talked about till we go into closed session, because that's the reason why...
There's no resolution.
That's the reason why.
That's it. Then you're misleading, because you're saying it's a potential litigation. So then there is no litigation, if it's just the assignment, right? If she's saying that it's about the assignment, that that's what we're gonna talk about, about the assignment in closed session. That's what she just stated.
Look, you have just... You have just said...
If you got, for example, a complaint by an employee about sexual harassment, let's say.
Okay.
That's an employment-related matter. You decide you want to assign that to...
Then that's what we do.
You've got no resolution delegating to anybody any authority to assign anything to him.
Exactly.
So the only ones who can make that assignment is the city council. And all that takes is a vote of the city council under an appropriate agenda item. That's all there is.
Yeah, because that wouldn't... An assignment wouldn't be a potential litigation.
We haven't gotten that yet.
This was supposed to be our meeting that we requested on the 25th, but they pulled the fast one on us, again, putting their... Tabled in it to put it here. Now look at what they're saying. They usually do that, and that's why we've been trying for so long because she keeps interrupting and he abides by it. That's our problem here. Very bad, serious problem.
So.
So in the beginning of the meeting.
And you cannot believe what Alma says.
What we need to do then is maybe schedule a meeting for with.
In the beginning of the, wait, in the beginning of the meeting, you just said, in the beginning of the meeting, you just said that this item is the same one that.
Because that's the way it's worded to me.
But then right now, you just said they weren't the same item. So what is it?
What are you talking about? Who wants those same one?
You're the one that said it right now.
I don't know what you're talking about.
I can only tell you. I cannot make you understand.
Because you don't have brain cells.
Oh.
But anyways, um, what, the way it's worded here, the way it's worded here is if it was a potential litigation for our, our existing city attorney to bring to our attention. Because it doesn't say, she said that we're supposed to discuss your assignment in closed session. It doesn't say anything like that. Potential litigations in closed session are the ones that go in closed session. You know that. Assignments for you is an open session, like the resolution that we're asking about. So what I was trying to say, what I was trying to say, even their assignment.
Nine years and you have to explain to her.
Or you, you could simply have a resolution that says.
Put it back on the agenda with that assignment.
Somebody, your city manager, has authority to assign specific, uh, personnel items.
But is it personnel items? That's why I'm asking with assignment.
Up to a certain dollar amount.
I'm sorry? Go ahead.
You, you could do it several ways, but what you need is the assignment.
Right, and that's what I.
Otherwise you haven't activated this contract, which, which I recognize has been approved, okay?
That's not the question. The resolution is what.
Is the answer. He just gave you the answer.
There's a requirement.
This contract.
You know more than Neil that has thirty-eight years.
He just said it.
He just told us it was approved.
Said it has been approved, yes.
There it is.
What I also said is that there's nothing assigned.
That's what I've been saying.
Or requested by the city for this firm to handle.
Exactly.
That's why we're going into closed session, so we can talk about it. He even said, they even said.
Why is it under potential litigation then? Because you don't put it under potential litigation because potential litigation means that there's gonna be a lawsuit, correct?
Yes, my understanding.
But it's potentially a lawsuit, not because potential litigation and, uh, assignment don't, are not the same thing, right?
It is not the same thing.
It's not the same thing. An assignment and potential litigation is not the same thing.
You've got potential litigation that you wanna speak to as a lawyer representing the city. What you have to have is that, under this contract, you have to have that matter, whatever it may be, assigned to you.
Mm-hmm.
And as it stands now, the only people that can do that is the council. Because there is no authority delegated to anyone else.
And this is why I was trying to say.
The judge doesn't have authority to enter into contracts or to make that request for specific services to be rendered.
Exactly. Because it was never given an, an assignment and there was no authority on the actual contract. It didn't say, "We authorize the city manager or the mayor to sign." Usually that's the language that it says on the agreement.
You're automatically authorized to sign. All contracts are signed by the mayor unless.
Hold on.
Unless we delegate other ones, okay? So it was approved, you should sign it. I agree with that.
Okay.
But we still need the assignment.
Hunter.
You're missing the big picture. The picture is that their assignment is, and the thing, the problem that I have. They're not trying to give him an assignment.
Anyone.
No, you don't understand.
Which, which you would typically do by assigning that authority to, to a staff person, city manager presumably.
So what you're, so what you're saying is that.
You would, you would set out the parameters of his authority because you can't give your staff person blanket authority.
No, he can't.
So what you're saying is that, as council members, we can motion to have chief move forward with hiring him?
Not on this agenda.
Not on this agenda? So we would have to do another one? That's what you're saying?
Yes, with the resolution and the assignments.
And what you would want to do is you would want to have a resolution so that it's clear.
That's what I was trying to say, but you guys would not let me.
She wasn't saying that's contradictory.
I was trying to say to bring it back with, that's because you barely gave me the contract right now, but I've asked for it for, for, since the last time I seen you, which was a couple of days ago, and nothing was given to me until right now. So, one thing is that what I said, well, it wasn't given to me. So I guess it was not signed.
It was in the package.
It was not signed. This one's signed.
You're supposed to sign it.
These weren't signed, whoever these people are.
It was in the package, but she didn't wanna sign it.
So, so.
Here's, here's what you can do.
So what I was saying.
What you can do.
Jesus.
You go into closed session, so apparently we've now, we've got two. Do you guys agree with this?
Yes, because it was tabled, the other one that's.
Two potential items on the agenda.
Is your.
Potential litigation items.
Is it potential litigation now? The other one is potential litigation?
Anticipated litigation.
Is everybody, is everybody in agreement with that? We have two potential items of litigation on the agenda. Anybody disagree?
Then, then what we can do, sir, is bring you back for the next meeting and we can have that.
I'm trying to avoid.
They don't wanna agree with it.
I'm trying to avoid that.
Well, they don't wanna agree with it, Neil. They don't wanna, she just said they don't wanna agree with that. So, so then, what we need to do, what we need to do, what we need to do is bring you back on to the next agenda, a next scheduled meeting with the correct language on the agenda. So what, what you can do is communicate with our chief and find out what the best date would be for you to come back. So we can have that assignment, whatever the assignment is going to be.
All right.
Another delay.
Sorry, but is that not done correctly?
Go ahead, Neil.
Neil?
Do you wanna hear this or not? I, yeah, I.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not added. It was tabled yesterday's. Yes, yes, it was.
My understanding was this agenda was already posted as of yesterday.
It's two different situations, sir, though.
And I agree with that. And so we have one claim, and so my understanding, again, I'm just, again, putting forth my understanding is that a majority of the council approved our contract for.
We're not talking about that. We understand that.
For specified services under the contract, that I am here today under item one, on which one claim is agendized and has been agendized, was prior to yesterday's meeting. Um, and that it is a properly agendized item before the council. Um, if the council does want to have, uh, take a different action, have us come back, have someone else come in, that is of course, fine.
There's not potential litigation though, because according to, uh, uh, accord, even anticipated, it's the same thing. They don't understand that that anticipated and potential litigation is the same thing.
I, I've been trying to.
Go ahead, Neil.
It's the same meaning, oh my god.
If you wanna go into closed session, if there are two items, if there are two items of potential litigation on this agenda, one of which was tabled from the prior agenda.
Exactly.
You can go into closed session on both items. And on the one item, you can decide what it is you want to assign.
I, I didn't hear the last part.
Nobody can hear you, Neil. You need to get to the camera.
Because he's not as loud as you are, Kathy. She just keeps going, Sabrina. What was that? Okay. But I still don't see how a potential litigation, and that's kinda deceitful because you're talking about an item that is not, should not be on there. But okay, I mean, that's what. That's deceitful there. I, I don't see anybody getting up. Is there any comments? For, only for the closed session item. We, we're not in closed session. Only what's on closed session, because we're going to go into closed session right now. Litigation. Do you have a comment for closed session yet, sir? Okay, so I don't think he has. Do you have a comment? If you do, so you can please approach the podium. If not, then so we can go into closed session.
Okay. If yesterday's meeting was only, there wasn't a quorum, how could you conduct the meeting?
There was a quorum yesterday. I don't know what you're talking about. There was no, and there was no meeting.
Monday.
There was no meeting, sir. And that's not, this is not public comment. That is closed session item comments. Do you have a question for closed session? Yes or no? Okay, thank you. We can go into closed session right now.
Under D two, we would have to do a statement of the facts of, uh, supporting the closed session. This is for potential, uh, litigation, or anticipated litigation, rather. So.
You want us to.
Well, my understanding.
He just went over it right now, so I guess we're back to square one again.
Okay.
Okay. Repeat it again, Neil.
So.
Everybody's confused.
We, we have two potential litigation items in closed session.
Correct, you just said that.
One of which is going to result in an assignment.
Yes.
To this law firm.
No, an assignment.
Of a particular matter.
One is gonna go into an assignment for a particular matter, which is the assignment that I was asking about, you don't have, and so that's what's gonna be in this closed session, uh, item. So the other one is potential litigation that you are gonna present to us as well. So the one that you're gonna stay for is only for the, uh, assignment part.
So, my understanding that your, Neil's, Mr. Costanza's position is that the closed session item is, I guess, as to an assignment. Now, I'm, I guess, not gonna give an opinion on whether we've been assigned because I don't, I think that would be a conflict, but my understanding is that, again, the, uh, majority of the city council approved our contract for special services. Again, I'm not the city attorney, uh, that we have a scope of services, that I am here on the D two item under, for, uh, for closed session, and that that item, we would announce the facts for, but it wouldn't have been the assignment. So I guess there is some confusion as to.
Yes, there is, because it was not done correctly from when they approved you. The way it was on the agenda, it was that you were gonna have a special assignment because you were a special counsel.
So the agenda.
That's the way it read on the agenda. And that's how, uh, Mr. Serta announced it, uh, announced it at the meeting as well. Yes, he did. He did announce.
That the contract is, that's all. Are, are we in closed session?
Not yet. So I think we need to go into closed session because if not, we're not gonna. Okay, you know what? It, it's, okay, then let's just cancel this because it's, we're just getting nowhere. We need to either have it back here again with the proper language so that everybody's on the same page of what we're gonna do because right now, everybody's all up in place.
She wants to cancel this meeting because it's not going her way.
Because we.
Is the only one that's not on our page. Is there a problem with bringing it back?
Yes, when it comes from you.
Okay, well then, it's not, then I'm sorry.
Just remember, people, on live stream, I told you guys not to believe a word that Alma says out of her mouth. She said if I didn't come into this meeting today, I was gonna lose my seat. She told that to KMPH, and that's not the way it works. And she lied on front, to KMPH that I was gonna lose my seat and I had to.
You jeopardize.
Put it on Facebook or what our, our contract is if we lose, how many days we miss. She said I was gonna lose my seat. She told Fox twenty-six that.
She was, she was jeopardizing seven hundred thousand dollars to the community, so that is a critical situation.
No, that's not it. You know what she was, she did? She, she didn't pay the city bills, but that's not a problem for her.
Okay, so are we going to, are you gonna work with, uh, Serta to see what day you can come back with? Or you're not, are you refusing to have an assignment? Is that, is that what's going on here? Because that's, that's what I keep getting. My understanding, what I'm getting is that you're just basing it off your contract of what you have, and that's it. No assignment. Can, can you please stop? I'm asking him a question.
Signed contract.
So, okay, so you work for them. So you don't have to a- answer the mayor that's the presiding officer.
That's okay. She's saying you work for them. He works for her.
Is that what you're saying?
May I just be heard on it?
Yes, please.
Can I be recognized? Thank you. Uh, again, my understanding is that a majority of the city council passed our, our contract in open session.
For special counsel.
Special counsel, as I've said, I'm not the city attorney. I'm not in the office of the city attorney. I'm not an interim city attorney. I'm not replacing the city attorney. The contract that was approved was for special services. My understanding is that I am here, at the invitation of the city, to speak on the closed session item that is agendized for tonight's meeting. And I guess I won't, I can't give you an opinion, I guess, about whether that's proper if you're asserting that the contract is invalid.
Special counsel, to me, my understanding, sir.
Point of order, may I be recognized?
At least I have an understanding, okay?
We can't, we can't make you understand or explain.
Because, you know, third graders are here. So, the thing that I'm trying to ask is.
Again.
Assignment, because that's what, that's what I thought they approved, is a special counsel with the assignment. This is why I asked acting city manager if he was gonna bring that assignment with a resolution. And he said, "Yes." I specifically asked him, and he said, "Yes," so then he lied to me when I asked him that day. It's on live stream. I asked him, "Do you understand?" He said, "Yes." "Do you understand that you need to bring a resolution with the assignment?" He said, "Yes." So who's deceiving who? I don't know what they tell you.
You are deceiving the community.
I don't know what they, when they contacted you, I don't know what they told you. This is why I was asking those questions.
Three times now. Let's read it again. It's really easy to understand, okay? It says, "The attorney agrees to provide."
Can you get closer to the mic, Neil, because?
It says, "The attorney agrees to provide legal services pertaining to employment relation matters, et cetera, et cetera, as requested by city." Okay? Has anybody requested you to provide legal services?
My understanding is that is why I'm here tonight.
So who requested that?
Who, who has requested that?
Who requested that?
My understanding is it's the scope, the scope of the contract has services, that services.
I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. Apologize for this.
Who requested it?
Neil, I think you have a conflict in this entire issue.
Because you're trying to take over his job.
I, I am, I am not trying to take over his job.
Are you gonna tell us who requested it?
He's not, he's refusing to requi, he's refu, the three requested you an assignment? That was not agendized and discussed in open session?
He let you speak. Let him talk.
There is an item on closed session, which I assume was duly put on the agenda. I don't know the, I'm not intimate with the facts on how it ended up in the agenda. I was asked by staff to appear at the meeting.
Who's staff?
Uh, I.
Bertha? Bertha, did you ask? Chief, did you ask?
The intro, I.
Serta, did you ask, yes or no?
I'm here at the, again.
Don't nod your head. Just, yes, yes or no, please?
You don't have to answer. Don't worry about it.
So I guess you don't have to answer to anything, because everything is hidden in the public.
When she wanted Neil here, she had him in the audience.
Let's just.
So I think it's point of order, then I guess we can, I mean, the council can, I move its meeting forward, and I guess if that decision is to come back, then we can have it come back. If the decision is to go forward on the closed item, uh, closed session item as agendized, then I think that that would be.
As agendized.
Correct, as agendized. I think that would be the appropriate course of action. That's ultimately gonna be up to the city. But that would be, again, my position on the matter.
And I still go back to, nobody gave the authority for him to give a specific assignments without the council approval. And it was just, your contract didn't say anything about any assignment. This is why I asked him, but he lied to me that day. So.
Alma liked Channel twenty-six and she's not worried about that.
Again, I think that it's just best that we go ahead and we have that resolution with specific because we're not gonna get out of here, and that way, um, we can have the specific, whether it's, whatever you're supposed to do that they called you and told you already that you were supposed to do.
You already read it a lot of times.
Legal services? He tried to explain it.
Dealing with a specific.
Assignment.
Contract, okay? And he's agreeing to provide the city specified legal services as requested. So there's gotta be a request by a majority of the council under a.
Not in open session. You guys requested something outside of the council meetings.
Of a public agenda item?
I'm sorry?
On a public agenda item?
Appropriate agenda item.
Yes.
And, you know, the.
Appropriate is public.
Simple way of doing it is to have a resolution that.
Gives him the assignment that he's gonna do. You can't do it on the side and call, not have a meeting and then give him calls, call him up and tell him what the assignment's gonna be without us talking about it.
So would it be, okay, this is just a question, and I'm trying to understand. Is it just, my understanding, like I said before, prior, was that we were gonna, that we were gonna get a special counsel to provide us, um, a second opinion, uh, to consult with, um, to get clarification on items that were being told to us. Um, that is my understanding.
Right, that's what, that's what you did back in like.
Last year.
Last December sometime that.
Last year.
Again, this contract that was approved, doesn't that, and I'm just gonna give an example, like when you put on closed session, all positions, isn't that legal services, like all, whatever he can do?
That's why, it's different. All positions, but you're the.
Well, because it says legal services.
Would you stop?
Would you stop? The chain don't stop.
It says legal services, so if we, if he's.
You're the one that's sounding terrible.
Requested by.
Then you voted for Kathy.
Signed it. Uh, my name's on here. Um, because, again, he, it was requested to have, um, conference with legal counsel. He is a legal counsel as well, um, the special one that they approved his, uh, contract. Um, so I'm not underst, I mean, I, I do understand what you're talking about, the resolution, all that stuff, but we can't, there are, I don't even know what it, I don't even know what it is, but are, is that even able to disclose that information before going, you know, okay, well, you're gonna deal with an HR issue or, um, you know, whatever it is? Um, but, you, you're, I, I think it, we're asking for a little bit, um, too much information where it says legal services. Legal services. Legal services, legal person, legal person, legal services.
Then you have two attorneys then. Two city attorneys.
No, no, no. We, nobody said it was a city attorney. He says special counsel.
But the way it's worded, that's the way I understand it.
Well, and it- And, and again, everybody will have their opinion.
Special counsel is-
And, and, well, but special counsel, that's what I'm saying. I, I don't mind somebody to go into and asking questions to clarify things that I'm not understanding. And again, he's-
That's what I've been saying. You go into closed session, you specify what it is.
Why, why, what this item is, right? What the item is on there. Okay, and then we decide.
And you, you vote on that, okay? You've already got it in closed session.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So can we go into closed session and close the door and turn that off already?
So is that what we're gonna do? Cause, cause it was all over the place earlier.
That's, that's what I've been trying to tell you for the last half hour.
Because I know you already had your previous meetings with everybody and you already know what you're gonna do.
Okay, can, can, we already, I think you had already closed into closed session.
No, I hadn't because the other guy wanted to speak and then he wanted to talk about me meeting.
But the, the item, Sabrina, on the closed sess- on the closed session, it, it's, she's trying to make it say that it's only to assign whatever. It's, it's what it, it's what-
We're gonna listen to what the item is, number one. Number two, then it's, what I'm understanding, we're gonna, would vote to say, this is what your, this is what your assignment is. And I, yeah. Okay, okay.
Is that what you're saying too, Neil?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay. Because he's the attorney.
It's not up to Neil, it's up to the consul.
Okay. It's the Ni- Neil's the attorney.
Neil doesn't run the city.
Okay, you don't either.
I'm just trying to get you to do it-
Legally. Lawfully, exactly. But everything's been done here unlawfully. Yes.
Okay, Neil, back from our closed session and there's nothing to report. Meeting adjourned.